Hey, good evening. Sorry we're a little bit late tonight. We went into executive session and needed to take care of some business that took us overtime. So, good evening, welcome to the 5 o'clock PM meeting of the Tulsa City Council. You can view this meeting on our Facebook page, on our YouTube channel, which is Big Time, Cox Channel 24, or at TGovOnline.org. Assisting the council tonight are Jack Blair, somewhere, Lori Doring, and Bailey Rogers. If you wish to speak on an agenda item, please see Bailey over here. She'll have you complete a request to speak card. Please complete that before we actually read the agenda item, otherwise you will not be allowed to speak. Please join us in pledging allegiance to the flag of our country and remain standing for a moment of silence. Thank you. Okay, we have proclamation for Ascension St. John.
Is it working? Now it is. Okay. So, we have a row of attendees here tonight from St. John, and I appreciate everything that you all do. St. John is a place that's near and dear to my heart. My dad was a physician at St. John for many years. He was Chief of Staff, and then later became the Medical Director of the facility. So, sorry if I get choked up, but it's a great place. So, if you guys want to come on up, I know that we have several of you here. Yeah, Lucky, that means you too. Okay, so this proclamation reads, "Whereas the city of Tulsa is committed to supporting institutions that improve the health, safety, and well-being of all residents and visitors; and whereas Ascension St. John Medical Center has long been a pillar of compassionate, high-quality medical care in Tulsa and the surrounding region for nearly 100 years; and whereas Ascension St. John Center, Medical Center, excuse me, has been verified as Tulsa's first and only Level 1 trauma center with the ability to deliver comprehensive 24/7 trauma care for the most critical and complex cases; and whereas this is a major advancement for public health infrastructure in Tulsa and in eastern Oklahoma, ensuring timely access to life-saving care for hundreds of thousands of residents." So now therefore, we, the mayor of the city of Tulsa and the Tulsa City Council do hereby recognize and congratulate Ascension St. John. Thank you. Growing up, my dad, his name was John, Dr. John Alexander, and I knew that the hospital, St. John, was named after him.
Okay. People wishing to speak on an agenda item are limited to five minutes total per meeting. Public input is a time for members of the public to provide insight on the agenda item. Due to the meeting format, public input is not a time for a question-and-answer period. All comments should be relevant to the agenda item and directed to the council. Fancy electronic timing machine here. Green means you have about four and a half minutes total. Yellow means you're in your final 30 seconds. Red means you're overtime. Please keep the podium area, railings, and aisles free from recording devices and tripods. Recording equipment and accessories, including tripods, must be set up in the media center. As posted on tonight's agenda, certain items are subject to consideration and possible approval, adoption, denial, amendment, or revision. Item C has been pulled. Item 7C has been pulled. I call this meeting to order. Please call the roll.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Here.
Counselor Archie?
Here.
Counselor Dutton?
Present.
Counselor Bellis?
Here.
Counselor Gilbert?
Here.
Counselor Bengal?
Here.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Here.
Counselor Lakin?
Here.
Counselor Bush?
Here.
Receipt and filing amendments. There are no items this week. Appointments and reappointments. Sarah Gilpin, appointment to the River Parks Authority. And B, Bruce Neme, appointment to the Metropolitan Tulsa Transit Authority. Do we have any speakers?
We have two speakers. Our first speaker is Bruce Neme.
Good evening.
I hope this is turned on.
Yeah.
Thank you. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the City Council. I'm honored to be here tonight to seek your approval. I look forward to service on the MTTA Board. I think this is a real important function for the city. By the way, Counselor Archie, I look forward to working with you on the 61st and Peoria area in your council district. Thank you very much, and I appreciate your vote.
Thank you, Mr. Neme. Mr. Hufines, you're next. She doesn't even tell us.
Peace, yes, peace. I'm thankful for our honorable leaders, Council Chair Phil Lakin and Vice Chair Karen Gilbert, Counselor, staff and team, and including our excellent security as well. We're thankful to the citizens of this great city of love, Tulsa, Oklahoma. It's good to be with you on this 27th day of August in the year of our loving Lord, Jesus Christ, 2025. Yes, appointments and reappointments. A, Sarah Gilpin, appointment to the River Parks Authority, Tulsa Metropolitan Area Planning Commission. And B, Bruce Neme, appointment to the Metropolitan Tulsa Transit Authority. May we continue to honor our volunteers and employees, and Lord, we send peace and wholeness to our Minnesota family. Thank you, family.
Thank you, Mr. Hufines. Do we have any council discussion?
Move to approve items 2A and B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Absolutely.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes. Items 2A and B are approved. Mr. Neme, thank you very much. Ms. Gilpin, are you here at all? Okay. Thank you. Item 3, public hearings. A, public hearing to receive comments from citizens regarding the proposed closing of a certain portion of the public way located at 3608 North Quaker Avenue. Is there a motion to enter public hearings?
Move to enter public hearing.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes. We're in public hearing. Do we have any speakers?
There's one speaker, Mr. James Alexander Jr.
Good evening.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I've been following this since it first came up, and I have a very serious problem with this. Because the way I have read that it's going to be set up, it is going to virtually put a lot of people that lived in that area that were supposed to have first choice to go back into this neighborhood in Comanche will not be able to because of the mixed-use pricing. And that's not a good thing for North Tulsa. We don't need things coming in there that will get people out of the neighborhood. We need the same people in the neighborhood that has been there. That has been a problem with Tulsa. And North Tulsa is whole, because all I see is that people, black people, are being moved out the area. I understand the city motivation for that is because you don't want another black area here in Tulsa. It has been stated since 1921, in the article, said there was no more nigger areas in Tulsa. It was it. Read it. 21 articles. I'll show it to you. I don't say nothing that I came back up. I have a problem with this. We're gonna have to change stuff in Tulsa, because we're gonna have to get it together. I'm not going anywhere. And Tulsa gonna change. People gonna wake up, and it's gonna be a different day in Tulsa.
Thank you. Any other speakers?
No.
Without objection, we will exit public hearings. B, public hearing for the purpose of giving members of the public an opportunity to be heard prior to any vote on the proposed Crutchfield Neighborhood Economic Development Project Plan. The purpose of the project plan is to provide an economic structure and funding mechanism to support growth and investment in the Crutchfield neighborhood by encouraging multiple types of private investment, including substantial new housing units at various levels of affordability, commercial, and mixed-use development. Is there a motion to enter public hearings?
Move to enter public hearings on item 3B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes.
Yes.
Does anybody need to make any kind of comments on this, legal comments, before we move into? Okay. All right. Please call our first speaker.
The first speaker is Stuart McDaniel.
Thank you. Next speaker?
The next speaker is James Alexander Jr.
Welcome back.
Hey, I'm here for the duration. I'm not going anywhere. Crutchfield neighborhood sector plan. In 2002, this plan was put together as a sector plan. Look, Mr. Larkin.
I'm looking. I'm looking at you right there on that TV.
Okay.
Look at that.
Now, the city of Tulsa has only one place that has a sector plan set up by the United States Federal Government in 1959. Crutchfield. It was a part of a urban renewal area set up by TDA, and it was around 2002. And what it did was put money that was supposed to be in North Tulsa to Crutchfield. That is a problem. I don't know what's going on in Tulsa, except that you are trying to stop black people from ownership of homes. That's what it is. And nothing you can say or do will change my mind about that because I have been studying this for years. I mean, years, since 1993? No, 19... What was it? Well, whatever it was. And you added to several other neighborhoods into the sector plan. Pearl Neighborhood, Crosby Heights, Kinder Williams, along with Crutchfield. Don't anybody see a problem in that? Money that's supposed to be going to a certain area going all over the city? And Kinder Williams has a million-dollar parking lot that was supposed to be in North Tulsa. There's a problem. Like I said, as long as I'm able to get up and move, I will be down here, but you know, this fight's gonna be over. We have fought this fight too long. It's time to get stuff right from the city. And you're gonna stop messing with black people and their homes. It's gonna stop, and it's not gonna take a lifetime for me.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Bernice Alexander.
Good evening, councilors.
Good evening.
I'm concerned about what you're doing, talking about doing for this area too. And I'd like to know, how is it that you are creating a urban renewal area when the designated area is North Tulsa? And why are you talking about taking? See, that man that was here, it just stays in my mind not so long ago. I think his last name was Seeright. And I say that that's where we are at the end of this campaign that we've been on for a long time, since 1994. We need to see right, and we need to do things the way that they should be done. I'm not understanding. How come this local government body has so much trouble just doing what is required of them concerning that North Tulsa community? What is the problem? I really have a concern because like I've told you all before, my family looks like the United Nations. All this racist stuff going on here is just beyond me. There's no sense in it. We all matter, and there's a provision for all of us. So why do we want to take from that area and that community, knowing that these monies are being sent here for the North Tulsa community, and create a new urban renewal area? Did you ever get permission to do that from the Justice Department? Because I'm gonna make an inquiry. You need to stop misusing funds and trying to strip the people in that federal entitlement community. North Tulsa is a federal entitlement community. It's the only one in Tulsa. But you're taking the provisions for that area from that area. Something's not right with this. We need to see right, and one of the things that we need to see right is that we all matter, and there is a provision for all of us. For all of us. And we don't need to try to keep destroying an area of this city because of race. That's what it's about. That's what 1921 was about. Declaring war on a community of people, dropping bombs out of the air and shooting at the people and burning up their houses and businesses. Who does that to a community that's a part of the larger community? And then here, this federal entitlement area is set up in North Tulsa to ensure that the people get the services they need, and you're taking the money and doing all other kind of things with it. We're still in this complaint process. We've been able to get quite a few things done. Like what? One of the first things we had to deal with was North Tulsa was being served with raw, untreated groundwater to drink.
Ma'am, can you really focus your comments on the Crutchfield Neighborhood Economic Development Project Plan? That's what we're talking about.
I am focused on this because this area, you're talking about taking money from that north area and putting it over there in Crutchfield. And that's not what that money is here for. Not only did we deal with raw, untreated groundwater, but we dealt with sewer, a failed sewer system. We've had to call for a major cleanup over there from the federal government to get it done during this process that we've been involved in. We're working with people about their houses. People need their homes repaired. We had to have a major cleanup over there, and we had to do it by force.
You have 30 seconds left.
I want you to think about what you're doing, and we need to see right, and we all matter in this city. Every person in this city matters. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
Without objection, we will exit public hearings. For Mayor's Items, B, resolution authorizing the sale of bonds, fixing the amount of bonds mature each year, fixing the time and place the bonds are to be sold, and authorizing the clerk to give notice of said sale as required by law for general obligation bond series 2025A in the amount of $107.705 million. It would have the emergency clause. Do we have any speakers?
There are no speakers.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve the resolution on 4B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes. Item 4B is approved. Is there a motion for the emergency clause?
Move to approve the emergency clause on item 4B.
Second.
Please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes. The emergency clause on item 4B is approved. The remaining items for C through T will not be read aloud. However, public comments will be received on these items. Do we have any speakers?
We have three speakers. Our first speaker is Mr. John Hufines for items 4A, G, L, P, S, and T.
Welcome back.
Thank you. Yes, thank you, councilors. Mayor's Item G, a travel donation from city of Amiens, France for Dana Walton regarding travels to Amiens, France for participating in the 20th anniversary of the city's sister city partnership. Oh, goodness. Such a day we're living in. My time is ticking. Thank you. Yes. Well, anyway, I noticed that it looked like Amiens, France is 4, 4,700 miles from here, according to your signs out on the sidewalk. And so I will just go on. Think of the paper I'm saving, though. Excuse me. I'm moving forward. Moving forward with this. Okay, so the sister city program is excellent. It's, this partnership is a great thing and helps create harmony and unity among our cities and the nations. And there are several nations that have sister cities with Tulsa. Tulsa has them with the nations, Germany, Russia, China, Japan, Taiwan, Mexico, Tanzania, and Israel. And there are precious people in each of these nations. Every person is precious, so true. Global awareness is important, yes, for God's love of the world. He sent Jesus, and he gave our planet Earth, beautiful Israel, the country where Jesus was born. And I'm grateful for the other nations, our sister cities, grateful for our loved Jewish community, our beloved sister city, Tiberias. And I'm grateful for our Jewish community, members' original homeland, Israel, and its eternal capital, Jerusalem. Yes, thank you, councilors, for your yes to this agenda item. Especially being application, Rock the Block for September... I'm gonna turn this. Thank you for your... Rock the Block, yes. Mayor's Item L, especially being application, Rock the Block scheduled for September 7, 2025 at 3500 South Indianapolis Avenue. This Rock the Block event is hosted by Christ Church on Harvard, whose mission statement is, according to their website, "Making disciples of Jesus, changing lives and transforming our world. Churches are also globally aware." Awesome. And for the cherry on top, they will be having inflatables, scheduled to have inflatables. Mayor's Item S, especially being application, Breakfast on Boston scheduled for September 7, 2025. And they are called, their mission statement, called to make fully devoted followers of Jesus Christ inwardly strong and outwardly focused in the VOK Center.
Mr. Hufines, you have 20 seconds left.
Thank you. So James Taylor's gonna be there, and his song, "Gotta look down upon me, Jesus, help me make a stand." So thank you for allowing me to make a stand. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Mr. James Alexander Jr. for items 4C.
Mr. Alexander? Okay.
Hey, what's that? Okay, I want y'all to understand something. This is what they call a sector plan, and it has been done since 1969 in Tulsa. It's the only one. In this sector plan, the people in the neighborhood were supposed to plan what they wanted in their neighborhood. I said supposed to. But it hasn't been done yet, except one time when we did it. We had three plans on the table, and none of them worked because the city didn't want it to work. Now, you have, Mr. Larkin, are you paying attention? School's in session, ding ding.
Yeah, you want me to give you more time, or do you want me to use the time from the public comment? We can give you the 39 seconds. We're gonna reset it to five minutes.
More than that, go ahead.
Okay, well, that's what we're trying to take care of.
Okay, now.
Are you talking about 4C? How are you tying what you're talking about, though, to 4C?
This is about HUD, right?
This is about TMUA Water Operating Fund, $250,000 for engineering services emergencies.
No, I didn't sign up, wrong thing.
Okay.
I signed up for 4C.
Oh, shoot, I was reading 6C. Yeah, come back. That was already... Come on. We're giving you five minutes. We're just starting fresh. This is...
Y'all just can't get enough of it, can you?
So your time is reset.
Okay, starting over, starting over.
Rock on.
This is a sector plan set up by supposedly the people in the area. TDA would take the people's plan and go around and turn it to the city's plan. This was done in 2016. It's time for a new one. This one was not done very well because it was done by a consulting firm, I think, out of Chicago, not the people. In 1975, when President Ford was in office, the law was changed for not from the top to the bottom, but from the bottom to the top. The people would say what they need, not the city. City's going back to that. That is a problem. So we're thinking, people, if you live in North Tulsa and you look like me, there's a problem going on. They want your area. They want you out of your homes. If you don't believe me, look around. Look what's being built there and who's moving in. And don't, and you can't tell me that that's not a problem. A black area, a historical area with OSU down there. If nobody sees, don't see a problem with that. Y'all drinking the wrong water. There is a problem. And you know, when you look at the area, or you look at a city, and you look at the city and see how it's set up, and if you look like me, a black person, and you don't see you there, you don't need to be in that city. But I'm not going anywhere. I live here. I grew up here. I went to school here. I'm here now. I see a problem. I'm gonna talk about the problem, and I'm out here to solve it. And the problem needs to be solved. Last thing. This group that you got to put this together is HUD group. I was a member of it, HUD committee. I was a member of it. The city got rid of me because they say I was too outspoken. Can you believe that? Me being too outspoken? I just said what's on my mind. And this group that set up this plan, this was supposed to be set up by people in the neighborhood, like me, like my wife. You have completely told us to get the hell out the way. You have, you told us to F-A-F-O, and we're not gonna do that. I'm here for duration. What you gotta say?
Thank you. Next speaker, please. I'm guessing it's Ms. Bernice.
Yes, we're here again. And your HUD committee, your HUD Community Development Committee, as my husband said, has not been serving the area because they're not making contact with the people who are being affected by these plans that they're putting together, I guess, for the city, because they're not working with the people who live in the community. So we've been able to get a lot done. Started out working with kids ages five to 17 for two years in a program that we took, we set up. Learned, I learned a lot about the kids in the community. I'm not from Tulsa. And then we started the Neighborhood Association. This is just, what is going on down here is outrageous, and I don't know how come this government body wants to destroy and take away from that North Tulsa community. We've had to fight to get the things done that we've been able to get done, and we're almost finished with the fight. You're excused. I hope you can hear where you're going.
Ma'am, just direct the com- Ma'am, just direct the comments you have to the entire council.
Well, she's part of the council, and she's the only one leaving.
You need to direct her.
But that's okay. That's okay.
Yeah. This is why I advise you to do that.
What are you saying?
I'm saying she has a personal matter to take care of, and you're supposed to advise, advise and address the entire council. Please do so.
Okay, well, I was including her in it. I didn't know what her situation was.
But you don't need to.
None of my business. But I hope she can hear what we're saying. Because we're not only talking, as most of you know, on this council, but we're working very diligently to bring this battle that we've been involved in to a completion very soon. Just have one more thing to take care of and things will start moving in the direction that they should. But thank you for listening. Change is coming.
Thank you. Do we have any more speakers?
There are no more speakers.
Okay. Any council discussion?
Move to approve items four C through four T.
Second, please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes. Items four C through T are approved. Five, there are no items this week. Six, ordinances, first reading, the following items in this section of the agenda will not be read aloud, and without objection, items six A through six F will be forwarded to the next council meeting for action. Six G will not be on the nine, ten, or September tenth agenda. Seven, ordinances, second reading, A, ordinance approving and adopting the Crutchfield Neighborhood Economic Development Project Plan. B, ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-six budget to make supplemental appropriations of forty-five thousand dollars, recognized from grant revenues to be received from the Dick's Sporting Goods Foundation. This all relates to TSAT health incentives. As we said earlier, seven C has been told. D, ordinance amending the fiscal year twenty-six budget to make supplemental appropriations of one thousand dollars, recognized from Tulsa Community Foundation, within the general government non-federal grants for council apparel and promotional items. E, an ordinance amending the twenty-six budget for two-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand-five-hundred dollars relating to an analog X-ray system with digital X-ray for bomb squad technicians. F is an ordinance amending and correcting ordinance number twenty-five six oh seven, which named increment District A as increment District Number Twenty-three, which was incorrect, replacing twenty-three with the correct number twenty-four, and making some other changes as well. That will have the emergency clause. Is there any discussion on seven A through F, excepting C?
Counselor Lakin, are we calling speakers?
Yep, that's what I meant to say.
Okay, but before we proceed, can, is now the time to ask to take seven G separately, or later?
I didn't read it.
Okay.
Yeah.
So we're just, we're through seven F right now. Thank you for clarifying.
Yeah, seven A through seven F, except C. So do we have any speakers on those items?
There are no speakers for those items.
Any council discussion?
Move to approve items seven A through seven F, except seven C, and with the emergency clause on item seven F.
Second, please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hal Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bengal?
Yes.
Counselor Dr. Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes. Items seven A through F, except C, are approved with the emergency clause on seven F. Seven G, ordinance amending Tulsa Revised Ordinances Title Thirty-seven, Title Tulsa Revised Traffic Code, Chapter Eleven, Title Pedestrians' Rights and Duties, renaming Section eleven oh five, sitting, lying upon, or standing in or adjacent to a roadway, establishing minimum horizontal clearance, establishing safety measures, and other things that would have the emergency clause. Do we have any speakers on seven G?
There are nine speakers for seven G.
Okay. Is there like a?
There's five against and four for.
Okay, that's all good. Just call them in the order that you have them.
Our first speaker is Evan Taylor.
Good afternoon.
Howdy. This has taught me a lesson about coming early and leading off, so I didn't realize there was nine people. Um, yeah, I, I see what's going on here, uh, safety and all, but I also think, uh, I would have just asked that we stop, postpone this, and amend it. And just for historical purposes, put what this is actually doing. Uh, this is an eyesoreness and safety issue. Uh, this is an eyesoreness because if it were just a safety issue, it would have been addressed a long time ago. Um, but yet we continue to have issues with drivers and cars. And that's what this problem is. It's not the people that are standing on the sidewalks, we just don't like them there because I don't know why. I have no reason for it. In fact, actually, I went to Tulsa Nathan Hale, and one of the disadvantages of TPS is we don't pay our coaches anything. And when I was in high school, our entire team of forty of us went out and stood in front of the McDonald's at Twenty-first and Sheridan, with signs asking for money to fund our high school football coach. With this law, though, we wouldn't be able to stand out there and give the money that the state's not giving to our employees. You know, we had to have children out there getting money for our state employees, but that's beside the point. That's not what we're talking about right now. We're talking about the people that are standing on the side of the road that are a nuisance. These aren't sidewalks anymore, these are safety buffer zones for cars. The people using these sidewalks aren't the issue, drivers hitting them are. We don't ask students to stop going to school, even though there's a risk of them being shot. Where's the real accountability here? The people that are driving into the sidewalks hitting these people? All they're trying to do is get a living, get some money to afford the next meal. And we're kicking them off and saying, go somewhere else, because our cars take a priority. No, that, a sidewalk is there for the pedestrian, it's a pedestrian sidewalk. Instead of viewing these people as a nuisance, maybe we let them be a constant reminder of how broken the system is. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Allison Dalton.
Good evening.
Good evening, council. Um, I decided to come, I'm Allison Dalton. Uh, I am concerned about the pedestrian median situation also. And rather than complain, I thought I should come and express my opinion and concerns. And so I do live in a certain area that is, has many, many pedestrians, or however you want to call the, a group of different peoples and their animals, and it has become a very dangerous situation, daily, morning, evening. And so I feel like I'm for this ordinance, but also with, um, I wish it would, I would have known sooner so I could change it a little more. My experience is, uh, I am nearing seventy years old, and I have personal experience and teacher experience and parental experience. And I feel like if you, uh, don't totally remove, you know, many people that are, um, in the narrow medians and even the wider medians, then there still will be a danger because, because, uh, if, it's kind of like, if you give people an inch, they'll take a mile. So for safety of the people that are there, I know they can be out on corners and different parts of the streets, but in the middle, where I live, when I'm coming up on the intersection, I am, I'm a very concerned driver, because someone might jerk out over here and jump in my view and be at my window, or they have, um, animals. It's also cruelty to animals out in the heat. They're, they're sprawling them, laying them there, and then they stay there many, many hours of the day. And, um, then when you get through the underpass and the intersection, you're also looking at good Tulsa road construction happening, which is, then you have to decide, okay, I haven't heard anyone on this side or that side, then I'm going, I've got to make sure I'm going this part of the road through the cones and the construction. And so I feel like it's a good or, to change the ordinance, so I was for it. But I also feel like, I hope it's enough with the inches, because I haven't gotten to read the ordinance and really see all of it, that if they have eighteen inches here or there, I just feel like it could be a crowd of people. And I, I do feel like there should be something in the ordinance for safety of those pedestrians and people that when they're, of course, they can cross and walk across roads and wide center medians and, you know, follow the, follow the law, uh, of, of walking person across to get to the other side. But it's just become quite a lot in many parts of Tulsa. So I, I, since I didn't get to read the whole ordinance, I know some parts that I've heard. I hope that it's enough and wide enough for the safety of the pedestrians and also so that drivers can make good decisions and follow safety also. And I know this does not pertain to corners, and so I feel like, as the gentleman said before, these people still have an area where they can be and they can receive help. And so I'm for, but yet I wish it was a little bit, had somehow, a little bit more could have been added for safety of all people involved. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Kristy Rawlings.
Good evening.
Hey, council. Um, I rise in strong, strong support of this ordinance, because at its heart, this is about safety, dignity, and responsibility. Every one of us has seen it, people standing on narrow medians or curbs, inches away from cars that are going forty, fifty, even sixty miles an hour. It is not only dangerous for the drivers, it's life-threatening for the individuals themselves. A single distraction, a single slip of the foot, and tragedy happens in an instant. I want to share my personal experience that shook me deeply to the core. Just a few weeks ago, I was at Eleventh and Lewis by Mother Road Market, which is also severely under construction. I pulled up on Lewis, getting ready to turn right on Eleventh Street, and there was a children's football and cheerleading team hosting a fundraiser. The kids were on the curb, they were dancing, they were holding signs, they were acting goofy to passing cars. Suddenly, one child lost their footing, stumbled into the street right in front of my car. Thank God I was paying attention and had good brakes. No one was hurt, but in that moment, my heart stopped, the child was terrified, I was shaken, the adults around were rattled, it was a near miss that could have ended in tragedy. We cannot allow our compassion to become negligent. Allowing people, especially children, to stand in harm's way is not kindness, it's abandonment. If we truly care about those who are struggling to raise, or struggling or trying to raise funds, we must direct them to a safe, structured place, not leave them exposed in the middle of the traffic. This ordinance is not about turning our backs on the poor or on community fundraisers, it's about protecting lives. Tulsa already has shelters, food programs, organizations dedicated to helping people in need, and our community has parks, sidewalks, and safe gathering spaces where kids can raise funds without risking their lives. I ask you to vote yes, not because it's politically convenient, but because it's morally, morally responsible, because the next life lost on one of our medians will not be an accident, it will be something that could have been prevented tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Erin Benutzi.
Good evening.
Good evening. So, right now, we need less government in these times. Um, we're having laws, uh, just trying to hinder basic survival needs. We're living in a world in two thousand twenty-five where minimum wage is still only seven dollars and twenty-five cents an hour, where home costs and rentals have tripled in some areas, and where rent can be sometimes five to ten times what it was when that seven twenty-five started. Um, our society is going to be judged on how we treat the less fortunate, and that this ordinance is not going to be helpful to a lot of people that are just trying to survive. Also, if this passes, this will eventually set a precedence that we don't need in our current political climate. Our federal rights are already being eroded by the executive branch. We don't need our city to help take away part of our First Amendment right to assemble outside of our designated and sometimes outright expensive permitted areas. And I truly believe that if this ordinance passes, we will do more harm than the good that it would do to clean up our intersections of the houseless problem.
What was that?
Um, I
I don't think so.
hope that you implore to vote no on this.
Yeah, let's wait just a second. Somebody walk outside and see what's happening? Okay.
Need weather. Earthquake, maybe? Anything come to the earthquake?
We're just gonna adjourn, we're gonna, um, no, Jack, help me.
Continue.
We're gonna continue the meeting in five minutes. Let's just get some situational awareness, um, and find out what's going on. So sometime after six eleven in this room on this day. this day. Okay, so we're, we're live again. We've contacted our chief of the fire department, they don't have any reports, building security doesn't have any reports as of yet, so we'll just, we'll, we'll keep going until we hear something from one of our government officials that would cause us to change course. So, we had just finished with our third speaker, if I'm correct. Yes. Yep, so, oh, we were done with our fourth?
Yes.
Okay, now we're onto our fifth. Okay, Bailey, will you call our next speaker, please?
Our next speaker is Carrie Sati for item seven G.
Good evening. I know, I know, two booms.
Good evening, counsel. I think we all want the same thing, improved safety for our city and for the people who live here. I actually last week did watch the entire Public Works Committee meeting, all hour and forty-five minutes of it, and it sounds like there's a lot of good things moving in the right direction. And did Sarah leave, is she, I was gonna really, I was gonna compliment Sarah for her insights that she shared during that meeting because it was really, she had, she had a lot of good things to share. But as I mentioned, we all want Tulsa to be a safe place. In one area where I think we can make an immediate impact is at our busiest intersections, where people are standing on medians or too close to the curb. At first, it may not seem like a big deal, but the truth is, is it's dangerous, not just for the person standing, but for drivers and everyone else on the road. And then there's the issue of distraction, kind of like what we're experiencing right now. Intersections are already the hardest places to drive, you're watching lights, other cars, trying to figure out who's turning where, there's student drivers, there's a lot of things that are going on all at one time, but when someone's standing right on the median, median or the curb, holding a sign, or asking for help, or even fundraising, that's one more thing that drivers have to process. And it only takes a second of distraction for something bad to happen. In Phoenix, a driver ran a red light after noticing someone in the median, and it caused a crash that injured three people. Then there's how close people are to moving vehicles. Cars and medians often come within inches of those curbs and medians. One sharp turn, one drift out of the lane, one stumble forward, and it can end in tragedy. Not long ago in Florida, a woman lost her life while standing on a median when a truck swerved. She, like many others we see, was simply trying to reach out in a place that wasn't safe. In Houston, a man was seriously injured just standing at the curb when a bus's mirror clipped him, and we've talked about how narrow our streets are if anyone drives up and down Lewis. That's one of the examples I thought of. But these areas simply just are not designed for people, to protect people, so it's about setting a precedent as well, that's been mentioned earlier. If people continue to gather in medians and curbs, whether to panhandle, fundraise, or just across the street, it starts to feel normal. And the more people out there, the greater the risk of accidents. Nationally, nearly seven thousand pedestrians die every year, and many of those deaths happen at intersections and roadside edges. And finally, we have to think about emergency response, I thought about the trauma team that was here beforehand. When medians are occupied, it affects traffic flow and can slow down ambulances, fire trucks, or police cars. In fact, it did that in Dallas, where paramedics lost time getting to a crash because people on a median blocked the light of, the sightlines, and drivers hesitated. So those delays can make the difference between life and death. Standing on medians or too close to the curb isn't just a personal risk, it puts everyone in danger, drivers, passengers, and the community as a whole. We've seen the injuries, we've seen the fatalities, and we know it's preventable, that's why tonight I'm asking that you please pass this revised traffic code safety ordinance. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Toni Bethel.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I have a bullet list of six things here that I was going to read, and then we lost five minutes going out there, so I'm gonna kind of cut to the chase on this one.
Oh, you can, you have five minutes.
Basically, I'm going to urge you to vote no for this, I think you ought to tease it out, there's a difference between medians and sidewalks. I think there's a big difference on that, and I think it ought to be teased out totally on that one, on what is safe and what is not. The other thing is that, you know, whatever it's named, it seems to be more about suppressing panhandling and protesting than anything else, and so I think it ought to be named correctly instead of misnamed. And lastly, I mean, rather than going through all of these, how are you going to enforce it, saying eighteen inches in from the sidewalk? Are you going to paint a line down there? If you're going to paint it, that's gonna cost an awful lot of money, that's not going to do anything for the visually impaired, so now you have to do something else so that they will know, where is this eighteen inches? How are you actually going to enforce it? Are police officers going to run around with tape measures, to be able to say, you're seventeen inches, or you're eighteen inches, or you're nineteen inches? So again, that's wasting their time. And lastly, I think the hundred and fifty dollar fine is way too much. If people are in the medians panhandling, they obviously don't have enough for that kind of fine, it's just, it's exorbitant. And the very last thing that I want to say is that Oklahoma City passed an ordinance very much like this, it was taken to court, they were sued over it, they lost in court, the, the Tenth Circuit of Appeals upheld that loss, it was sent to the Supreme Court, and again, the Supreme Court agreed that it was not constitutional. So are you going to pass this and then cost the city a lot of money being taken to court because you will be? Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Bernice Alexander.
Okay, yep, she, she left.
Our next speaker is Ellen Ray.
Good evening.
Good evening. I admire everyone's commitment to public service amidst unknown grumblings below City Hall, hopefully we'll figure that out soon. But my name's Ellen Ray, my day job is that I work as Director of Planning and Zoning for Housing Forward, but I'm not here to talk about housing at all tonight, or represent my employer in any way whatsoever. I'm here as someone that's deeply concerned about the safety of our streets, and particularly the pedestrians that walk aside them, and as someone that understands those concerns, having the lived experience of not owning a vehicle for seven years, and understanding that the choices you make when that's not on the table for you are very different than what those who have vehicles do. So, I think there's a lot of things to say here, I watched Public Works Committee today, and it sounds like there's quite a bit of consensus around medians generally passing, so I'm just gonna talk about the eighteen inches in my remarks. Overall, I want a safe pedestrian environment, but I want to implement safety measures that get at the causes of pedestrian fatalities and regulate those causes. And that's vehicles, that's not people. I have data to talk about this in many different ways. The National Highway Traffic Safety Administration, NITSA, which is part of the US DOT, does yearly statistics on all of the different types of ways people die on the street, it's really gloomy. But one of the ones they did for Oklahoma in 2023 is on factors that led to pedestrian fatalities. The number one is failure to yield right-of-way, that's sixty-two percent of pedestrian fatalities had that as a factor. Further down is something related to pedestrian behavior, it's individuals standing in the roadway, that was about seventeen percent of cases. Further down, presence of alcohol, nine percent. There's lots of factors, but when you look at the number of fatalities caused by obscured vision, whether that be to rain, snow, or fixed objects, that number is zero. So that's the best data I could find that's localized to our state, but I think it's consistent with a lot of findings that you'll see elsewhere, which is that cars are the culprits for these pedestrian deaths, so if we're really concerned about pedestrian safety, this is an approach we should take. I absolutely want to look at high-crash corridors and making our high-speed roadways more safe, but we need to start from that perspective and not from the perspective of trying to get pedestrians to behave or not distract drivers, the data just doesn't show that that's a main cause. Secondly, I'm a real dork, and my career started in transportation, so a little deep dive into the ASHTO standards. In the transportation world, there are many different entities that create standards. I'm not here to discredit ASHTO, but I will remind the council that ASHTO came into existence as an association of state highway transportation officials, and therefore, many of their standards are designed for much higher volume, wider roadways, and have, in the past decade, really grappled with how to apply those standards to urban environments. As a result, I don't think ASHTO is wrong, I think that using one uniform baseline eighteen-inch standard doesn't have the level of context sensitivity we need to regulate urban roadways. Basically, unlike rural highways, urban street design must balance safety with the realities of a dense built environment, so there's always trade-offs. If you talk to Terry, if you talk to Paul, they know what it's like to try to balance the utilities, the sidewalks, the trees, the people, having one baseline standard's really challenging. Two examples of how there can be a lot of dissonance in this space come from the manual and uniform traffic control devices, MCD, which is cited in the ordinance. Section 2A 16, a lateral offset of at least one foot from the face of the curb may be used in business, commercial, or residential areas where sidewalk width is limited. Section 8E 07, sidewalks do not have a minimum lateral offset. Again, I'm not here to weigh all of these things, but just to mention that the regulations surrounding transportation are complicated, and trying to have one standard that fits everywhere really ignores how much the design of roadways and driver behavior has to do with it. Lastly, I picked up a little bit of a conversation on the age of sidewalk regulations, so just wanted to clue folks into the fact that plating and subdivisions really didn't come into existence until 1977, when Oklahoma required them. So if your council district has neighborhoods that were developed before those requirements, odds are that they included that eighteen-inch standard early on, or is pretty low. So, thank you for your time, just encouraged to think about context and how we can really protect our pedestrians.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Samuel Robson.
Good evening.
Good evening, councilors, my name is Sam Robson, and I'm a resident of District One. While I do understand that the intent of this ordinance is to protect pedestrians from car accidents, I think this ordinance is harmful to public safety, irresponsible, given our lack of pedestrian infrastructure, and punitive to our most vulnerable residents. As you all know, civic infrastructure, like accessible sidewalks, streetlights, bike lanes, and road quality, has consistently been a top voting issue for Tulsans. These issues are especially pronounced in District One. I've heard from residents of children and seniors making the dangerous walk south on Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard as it twists and turns without sidewalks and adequate lighting. Bus stop closures in recent years have left North Tulsans walking farther and farther, and only rarely do they have the opportunity to use a sidewalk to make the journey. Often, the sidewalks we do have are poorly lit, overly narrow, and too close to the street. It is this council's job to build the infrastructure needed to make Tulsa a safe place for children, seniors, and pedestrians to navigate. Unsafe roads are the fault of the city, not the thousands of residents of Tulsa who can't afford a car or need to panhandle to get basic needs met. But instead of investing in improving the safety of our roads and sidewalks, this ordinance instead criminalizes and blames the very people at risk of harm due to decades of divestment and neglect of our communities by City Hall. If you don't want people walking close to the street, build sidewalks with a proper buffer, put up signs to educate people about the risks, paint lines showing where it is safe to be and where it is not safe to be. Don't fine a group of people who are overwhelmingly unable to pay, take accountability for the safety issues plaguing our communities, and commit to investing to improve them. This ordinance does nothing to educate or improve, only to lay the blame on our most vulnerable residents and overwhelm Tulsans in poverty with even more fines and fees. Hence, I urge you to reconsider this ordinance and instead choose to invest in our infrastructure, educate the public about road safety, and do your part to make Tulsa safe. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
There are no more speakers.
Okay, moving to council discussion.
Move for approval of seven G.
Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, hang on just a second, we have a motion on the floor, is there a second? For seven G.
Second.
Okay, now we can move into discussion. I think I saw your hand first, and then Counselor, Dr. Wright.
So, I want to clarify some information. One of the speakers mentioned something about it being dangerous just across the street. On these medians, we have crosswalks, and sometimes people with disabilities in a wheelchair, crutches, maybe some neurological disorders, have to use the medians because they cannot get across the street in a timely manner. So crossing the street is not illegal, and as far as the medians go, the eighteen-inch variance we're all talking about was not established until 1985. Data is important in this equation. In many areas of Tulsa, there were sidewalks and curbs developed prior to 1985 that did not include that eighteen-inch variance that we're talking about. Being that that's the case, it is a penalty to areas of Tulsa, and we're penalizing disenfranchised populations when you're talking infrastructure and development after 1985, when some measures were put in place for barriers and traffic control. As another speaker said, this is a vehicle issue. In research that I did in regards to data, it proves out that the majority of people that are hit by vehicles, there's usually alcohol involved. The majority of accidents that occur are normally after 6:00 PM, when it starts to get dark. Also, the percentages of people that get hit that are considered pedestrians also include children on sidewalks behind driveways. So, the information that has been presented doesn't give the full scope and detail of what all that encompasses. Children account for eighteen percent, seniors sixty and over account for the majority. Eighty-five percent of pedestrian accidents do not occur in intersections. They incur, occur in urban areas where there are sidewalks, and people are either walking in the street or otherwise. So, I just would like clear data, and as far as the fines go, I think it would be prudent for us to discuss, as a council, the fine situation. I think the focus needs to be on vehicles, and vehicle safety and driving, rather than on citizens and pedestrians utilizing our streets, our sidewalks and medians for whatever purpose. Thank you.
Counselor, Dr. Wright.
Thank you, Chairman Laken. Thank you to all the folks who stayed and spoke, sorry for the disruption, I don't know that we know that, what that was, but you can see that one of our colleagues, who is a new mother, decided to leave because we don't know what it is, so she apologizes for that, but I was, in item eight, gonna welcome her officially back from parental leave, this is her first meeting since having her baby boy in June, so. So that changes the dynamic of what might happen here on a vote, so I have a couple of things I want to say. On the very day that we're debating whether to overregulate sidewalks in the name of so-called public safety, restricting how pedestrians use them, which councillor Dutton just reminded us is quite normal, to have pedestrians on a sidewalk and crossing the street, we're simultaneously unable to agree on genuinely protecting the public safety of our two S LGBTQIA+ community members. So to bring it back to this agenda item, the heart of today's debate is on sidewalk regulations. Earlier today, I think we found general consensus around median regulations, although I do want to say, thank you, Ms. Ray, I appreciate your expertise. You are actually a local expert in the very things that we're trying to regulate. We're looking to overregulate how pedestrians use the sidewalks and maybe possibly the medians, supposedly in the name of safety. It is normal for pedestrians to stand, walk, run on sidewalks. In many parts of town, you can also skate, scooter, and bike on sidewalks legally. And of course, folks who use wheelchairs and other mobility devices can also be on the sidewalks. In places around town where there's no sidewalks, they're on the street. We heard that today from our councillors who represent older parts of town where there aren't sidewalks. And thank you to the speaker, I think Ms. Bethel, who also raised the concerns of blind pedestrians. I think we had a blind spot about that, but thank you. So at the time, we're hesitating to take clear steps to protect the actual safety and dignity of vulnerable communities in a much more direct way. We're having a conversation about whether or not Tulsa, Oklahoma sidewalks are unsafe in comparison to every other city's sidewalks. That was the discussion today. The eighteen inches from the curb of a sidewalk is dangerous. You shouldn't be on them. We're designing to newer standards. We discussed in certain parts of town, as we make those infrastructure updates, we are applying the new standards, but there are so many places around the city where those standards aren't applied, they're not going to be applied anytime soon because the funds just aren't there. I will say, on a stretch of road in District Seven, where pedestrians have lost their life, where we, in the last five years, have added more than fifteen hundred housing units and an expansion of a medical facility that brings nine hundred minimum cars in and out a day. We have a two-lane road with berm ditches and sidewalks that have been piecemealed on only the east side of the street. And just for context, when we talk about funding needed to build to the new design standards that are deemed safer, we're looking at half, five hundred thousand dollars just to fill the gaps of the sidewalks that are on one side of one mile. And so on a road that someday might be widened, and maybe we'll get sidewalks on both sides, and that's just one mile of road that's highly, highly trafficked between 81st and 91st on South Mingo in District Seven, where we have had vehicular fatalities and pedestrian fatalities. So if we can consider adding these kind of restrictive rules about where people can stand on a sidewalk, then surely we should overextend, long overdue protections for those who need it most. It's about making sure our policies are consistent and that we're not focusing on minor restrictions while ignoring the bigger picture of real public safety and equality. So thank you to those who spoke to those elements as well. So as we turn to the proposed sidewalk regulations and median regulations, I know there's been a lot of insistence and a bit of umbrage at the suggestion that we may be specifically targeting unsheltered individuals or impoverished panhandlers. I don't think that's the intent, but that is the perception. We've heard it here today. People have a hard time just saying what it is. It's not certain groups of people that are going to be most impacted by this. It is people experiencing homelessness on the streets of Tulsa, Oklahoma. The most generous city in America, in the buckle of the Bible Belt, we have a problem with people who are suffering from mental illness untreated, addiction and substance use disorders, and lack of income to be able to afford to live in our city. That is the reality, and none of us like it, including the people who are dealing with that every day. I think that's a universal agreement up here. Nobody wants people in Tulsa, Oklahoma to not have a safe place to live, or stand, or receive the services they need. So I really want to clarify, and I said it earlier today, if this passes today as proposed, you are still going to see unsheltered people, or people who have shelter, who don't have a means for income, for any number of reasons, panhandling on the streets of Tulsa, Oklahoma. You're also going to see them sleeping on the streets, sleeping behind dumpsters, sleeping in encampments. We are making steps to change those facts, but this is not going to do that. So I want to be very clear, this is not going to do that. It is going to ask our police officers to enforce new measures that even up here we're confused about what eighteen inches is. Is it on medians that have a crosswalk that goes through them? It's very confusing, and I've gotten a lot of inquiries from all kinds of people saying, "I don't really understand what this does or does not do." So what I'm saying is, if this passes, there's another tool in the toolbox, but I will remind everyone, we also strengthen our right-of-way obstruction ordinance, which also impacts whether somebody can sit, lie, or have their things out on a sidewalk and obstruct the right-of-way. That also applies to people who assemble. If they're blocking sidewalks, that is illegal. And I do want to say that the concerns about a right to assemble freely, protected on the Constitution, is a consideration in any ordinance across the country that is trying to tackle this situation. I do think that our legal team has considered that. I do also acknowledge that in a time like this, when people are exercising their rights to assemble and protest, it feels like this is a little heavy-handed approach, regulating eighteen inches of a sidewalk, which we acknowledge in parts of town, on a five-foot width, eighteen inches doesn't even allow for the ADA accessibility that we ask for in the right-of-way enforcement. So we talked about those things, but I think it was a little bit like, well, I guess we'll just figure it out if it ever comes up. I mean, we could anecdotally scenario ourselves to the nth degree in a two-hundred-and-one-square-mile It's clear from the public comments today that most people are interpreting this as effectively removing the panhandlers from sight. I did want to clarify for anyone who thinks that the ordinance as it currently exists allows for children to be anywhere in, right-of-way solicitation is what we call it, roadway solicitation. The current law as it exists is for sixteen and over, and we were very deliberative on that because sixteen-year-olds are potentially going to be driving on these same streets, and we expect that they would be more ready to understand the laws and regulations. So if there's children under sixteen doing this activity right now, it's illegal. So this raises the fundamental question, are we being honest about what this ordinance will do, especially given that we already have laws on the books that aren't fully enforced, and that's on the sidewalks and in the street? Our police department is understaffed, and adding this other layer of regulation that targets the visibility of poverty does not solve the underlying issues. And so are we truly motivated by safety, or are we just uncomfortable seeing suffering in the public and want to hide it away? I want us to be super clear about our motivations and ensure that these policies reflect the compassion and values we claim to hold, and acknowledge that should it pass today, you will still see the very thing that all of us want to change so desperately, and that I firmly believe the leaders up here are trying to get done. That said, I would like, as per our discussions earlier, to offer a subsidiary motion to the motion to make some amendments to the ordinance as put forward. So I would need a second.
Well, what are the amendments? Can't just...
Do I have to list out the amendments? Okay. Thank you, Chair. So as per the discussions earlier, and I recognize that we're down one councillor who clearly in discussion was aligned to some of these, so I don't know how it'll go, but that's the beauty of democracy and representative government. The amendments would be on, let me pull it up here. Thank you to Jack for helping us parse this out. The First Amendment would be for Section 1 under A of the ordinance, and it would be to amend the language from sitting, lying upon, or standing in or on adjacent to, we would take adjacent to A out and put on, a roadway median. So we defined that we're just targeting medians and not sidewalks in Section A, and the amended language would add median after roadway in that paragraph, which is listed twice, once in the third line from the bottom of the paragraph, and next in the second line from the bottom of the paragraph, and third in the last line of the paragraph. So to clarify, we would say, standing, lying upon, sitting, on roadway medians on item A. That's the First Amendment, which really narrows that into the medians and takes away the sidewalk element, even though sidewalks are not specifically languaged here. And then the Second Amendment would be to amend item, Section 2 on the penalties. If everyone can look at it, it's in the box under Section 2, where it says, "Sitting, lying upon, or standing in or adjacent to a roadway." We would add roadway median, and we would amend the one fifty, a fine down to fifty dollars. So that all to say, it would take the sidewalk element out, leave the median element in with the eighteen-inch buffers, and take the fee down from one fifty to fifty. Those are the amendments to the main motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So we can still debate the amendments and other elements. I might just jump in. Other councillors can jump in as well and talk about the main motion, the amendments to the motion, whatever it would be as it relates to this agenda item. I'm really grateful for the conversation that we had at our 2:30 that went into four o'clock. I'm really grateful for all of you who came out tonight to share your thoughts and your comments. Councillor Dr. Wright, I don't agree with all the words that you said, and you don't agree with all the words that I will say either. I do agree with your words about being in the name of safety. And so that's why I brought this ordinance, that's why I signed on to this ordinance, because I have seen for way too long unsafe conditions for people occupying our narrowest medians. And the corners, the sidewalks, that safe barrier at eighteen inches on our sidewalks that we've been talking about as it pertains to standing and sitting. For everybody's knowledge, and I think we've talked about this, I don't know how much people watch our debates or not, but you can still walk, bike, skateboard, wheelchair, you can do anything on the sidewalks that you possibly want to do, so long as you're not standing or sitting within eighteen inches of the roadway. A curb is typically eight inches wide, or so roughly. So it's basically two curbs width that we're asking people not to stand or sit in because it's too dangerous. Yeah, vehicles are a major problem, but we don't know, as pedestrians, when vehicles, when the people driving the vehicles are going to make mistakes. Mistakes have been made. Mistakes were made at 71st and Yale in my district, where one person was killed, only having been out there to distribute information about a drug abuse program for a church. One person was critically injured. So if this ordinance had been in place, if they were following the law, those people wouldn't have been out in the median. Yeah, the vehicles caused the problems. The vehicles ran over those people, unfortunately, but they were still out in an unsafe space. Same thing can be said about the sidewalks, and to the point about, you know, the city not doing its job, the city needing to do more, I guarantee you, yeah, I'll get to you in just a second. The vast majority of us are doing everything possible that we can in order to make our roads and our sidewalks more safe. I was part of the Transportation Advisory Board way before I was a councillor, and I dedicated a lot of time into complete streets, into good urban design, into bringing the plans to the council at that point that we have in place now, that are actually moving the sidewalks away from the roads. And if any of you want to just drive through the streets on Google Maps, or just get in your car, if you have a car, ride a bike, do whatever you want to do, but go through and look at the sidewalks that we have along our roads. Typically, there is enough separation between the roadway and the sidewalk. Where this, this ordinance as it currently stands, it doesn't, doesn't have any effect on those people who are standing or sitting on that sidewalk, because they're already far enough away from those roadways. In my presentation this morning, or this afternoon, that I gave to the council, I had nine different examples. And you can find nine different examples than I found, but I was really pretty amazed as I spent an hour going through Google Maps, just continuing to go down street after street, at how good of a job we've done with our urban planners, with our engineers, with a real solid focus on keeping pedestrians safe. This is just an additional step for me in moving towards safety for pedestrians. I'm sticking with it. I appreciate you putting those two amendments up for discussion. As we talked about earlier today, with respect to the fee, the fee has been a hundred and fifty dollars since 2017, so any of us could have brought an action that would have reduced it. And I truly do feel like this is a better conversation to have outside of this particular motion, where we can see the context of all of our fees as they apply to pedestrians, or to moving violations, or to whatever it may be. So I'd continue to advocate that that needs to take place. I'm totally supportive of that taking place, and for us to modify fees in that way going forward. And we'd start that next week and have something up and before the council for consideration in not very long at all in the grand scheme of things. So that's, those are my comments for now. I know councillor Dutton has a comment, councillor Hall Harper, then anyone else as well. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so I want to address the pedestrian safety sidewalks, the right to assemble. As we have seen in the last five years, that pedestrians are at risk even on the sidewalk, even in plazas, with vehicles driving intentionally into crowds. Those individuals did not violate any laws, it was the drivers of vehicles that did. And so I think we need to keep the focus on the fact that these are vehicles, we have laws in place, we have a structure, we have law enforcement that can mitigate some of these issues. We can slow down speeds in areas where there are those issues, say at 71st and Yale that was quoted today. We could also include more sidewalks in our budget as we go forward in various areas of Tulsa that don't have sidewalks, curbs, or can't even get speed humps. Speed humps are another option. I just would prefer not to see clogging up the courts with petty citations that may also compile onto citations of jaywalking, or setting up an abode, or anything petty. A person can only get so many citations before a warrant is issued. I would prefer to see that money being spent creating barriers to vehicles and traffic, and improving our safety with vehicles for our pedestrians. We want to be a pedestrian city. We want to be pedestrian-friendly, but it's apparent that we want to visually criminalize people because they're the easy targets, they're the easy people to see, they're the easy ones to see than the forty people maybe speeding in an area on a street. Or those are the people that we see instead of the people running stoplights and stop signs, or that's easier to target somebody and point them out rather than have DUI checks. The majority of the pedestrians that are killed are due to some sort of distraction, some sort of impairment, alcohol, drugs, whatever have you. So I still think the onus lies in the responsibility of drivers and vehicles. And I just wanted to point out that you're not necessarily saying... And I just wanted to point out that you're not necessarily safe in a plaza, you know, we're talking the safety of people, uh, vehicles are pretty powerful.
Counselor.
Thank you. Um, so I've, I had a couple of concerns, and, and you've, you've heard these, and so I'll just reiterate, but, um, I know when I brought this up, it's been said that we are not limiting access to sidewalks, but that's what it sounds like to me. And primarily, when you do that, again, freedom of, uh, the right to assembly, freedom of speech, freedom to protest, those are constitutional freedoms. Um, and I think, and I fear, I should say, that those freedoms will be hampered. I've heard, uh, in a lot of our discussions, especially our initial ones, about there being a lot of officer discretion in the enforcement of this. And I've said before, and I'll say again, when you say officer discretion, that scares the hell out of me. I can appreciate your situation where someone lost their life, but also, I want to remind everyone of a situation that happened in my community a couple of summers ago, where two young boys were walking down the street, no sidewalks at all. They, officers came by, stopped them, one of them actually pulled the pants off of one of the young men, searching them, handcuffed him, sat him on the curb in the heat, to trying to find a reason why they stopped them. They ended up charging them with jaywalking. This went viral, national. They dismissed the charges of jaywalking. Then after they filed a lawsuit, guess what? They brought the charges back up on them. That's the kind of retaliation that took place in that case. And in my community, I fear that those types of situations will continue, because nothing happened to those officers. And so, that is a concern for me, because I know, although we don't, we want to act like it's not the case, policing takes place differently, is implemented differently in black, brown, and poor communities than it is in white affluent communities. This is America, and that's a fact, and that's an example you can, if you challenge, go to on YouTube and just Google that, it's still there. We were sued. The city of Tulsa was sued, and we lost. They didn't get no, near the money they should have, but they lo, we lost. And so, this, when I heard this, that is what came to my mind, and that is my concern. Uh, I appreciate the amendments, uh, Counselor Decter Wright made, we'll see, but again, in any enforcement of something like this, uh, again, it just scares the hell out of me, but we'll see, we'll see how this, uh, proceeds. And I hope that we, when these situations arise, that we discontinue justifying and giving cover to law enforcement when they clearly show bias and disrespect to communities of color. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Gilbert.
Well, this has been a day of, uh, debate, and, um, it's been very, um, very helpful listening to the opinions of, of everybody. I, I like what you said, Counselor Decter Wright, about this being a, a safety, a sidewalk safety, um, and issue, and, um, me, myself, um, I use sidewalks all the time. I, I run almost every single morning. I was using sidewalks on arterial roads, um, running with my dogs, but I've had to stop because of, uh, safety issues. The sidewalks that I do run on, they actually do have that eighteen-inch, uh, grass buffer, so, um, there is that protection, but I don't use sidewalks anymore. Yes, I agree with there needs to be more education with drivers. I totally agree with that. As a runner, I don't know how many times I almost get hit, just being out trying to cross the street, running in neighborhoods. So, there does need to be a lot of education out there with drivers, if they will only listen. But, this is what this is all about, is keeping people safe, making sure that they stay safe. So, um, that's why I wanted to, uh, sign on with this, and, um, hopefully, fingers crossed, that it passes tonight, and we can, um, hopefully have one less tragedy in Tulsa.
Anyone else? I'll, I'll just say one other element that I've said before in the past, too. You know, I, I've received, I don't even know, countless emails about the issues relating to people sitting on medians, the concern that my citizens that I get to represent have about their well-being. Um, they truly are concerned not just about the individuals, but about the animals that they're taking out sometimes, oftentimes, onto the medians. Oftentimes, it's not just the person's body who is on the median, sometimes there's a leg, or an arm, or something else, um, that is encroaching into the lane of travel. Um, I personally have seen a person in a wheelchair who was in the median, who had fallen off of his wheelchair and into, uh, one of the traffic lanes, and traffic having to stop very quickly so they could get that person back into his wheelchair and back onto the median. And then the one that really stands out for me is, um, the girls who were just out doing fundraising, it was a car wash fundraiser, but there must have been a dozen to twenty girls on all the medians in the Ninety-Sixth and Riverside intersection. And, um, that really drove home for me, the need to get this over the line, because they were definitely in a very, very unsafe place, uh, doing those kinds of activities, especially when, you know, I feel for them, I want them to raise money for their activities, but to do so in a very safe way. So, I won't be voting for the amendments as they are, I will be voting, um, for the original motion as it, as it currently stands. Um, we do have the amendments on the floor, do you want to say one other thing?
I do.
Sure.
I do.
Go ahead.
So, I also want to talk about how our firefighters, um, are in the streets with the boot, and they're also collecting donations. Are we going to fine them a hundred and fifty dollars?
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, okay, so, so, the enforcement is across the board, we have to consider, we're not just talking the panhandlers, which everybody seems to be real cautious about saying, but that's what this is about. And I really think that there are so many more people that, um, firefighters for one. I'm not opposed to them trying to raise money and accept donations, but not a single person in here mentioned that, and I think it needed to be said.
Well, we, we did mention it.
Yeah.
On the very...
Yeah.
Yeah, last week.
But I mean, tonight, yeah.
Oh, yeah, they have to abide by the law, and they were not allowed to do any solicitation from 2017 to 22, whenever we had that law in place, so. Counselor Bingle.
Thank you, Chair. Um, this really is about public safety for me. Yesterday, through my own comedy of errors, I was supposed to do a tour of the Family Safety Center. Um, coincidentally, there's a sidewalk that is parallel to the existing property and the property that's being constructed. And as I was walking between the, uh, pre-existing site and the one being constructed, just coincidentally, there is that sidewalk with that buffer. And I decided, let me walk in that area that has that brick, uh, element to it. And I had some anxiety as I was walking through that. And I've also, um, expressed the issue about our children, right, and our children walking along sidewalks. Uh, we would not let our child walk that close to a sidewalk, in fact, as parents and, and acts of self-preservation for our child's life, we would immediately either make some sort of expressive, uh, gesture, or yell, or grab, and pull them away, uh, from that. And as Counselor Lakin stated earlier, uh, in our committee meeting, um, he doesn't want his spouse, he, uh, there's, there's a, that act or that instinct to preserve someone that you care about. I, I validate, um, Counselor Hall Harper's concerns about, uh, First Amendment. The eighteen inches, I couldn't see it diminishing, uh, and that's what I really tried to put in my mind, is how would this diminish, um, if you did have an assembly, a peaceful assembly, or a demonstration, or a protest, however you want to label it? How would that diminish your cause? I think sometimes you can have some folks that could be over-exuberant about their cause, and they just become even more aggressive and, and put themselves in even greater danger by encroaching on traffic. I won't disagree, cars are a problem. We all know that people drive aggressively in Tulsa, we don't have enough officers to police every place where there is this problem. I have neighborhoods, there are people who are saying they're speeding constantly. Mingo Valley Division Commander comes out, posts officers for a period of time to try and help some of that stuff, but we hear it all over the city, people racing, we see it downtown, right? We don't have officers downtown that can sit down here and, and deal with these problems. This really is a public safety issue for me personally, um, I haven't spoke that much about this, uh, and I do validate the concerns of my colleagues, but I support this as it stands. So, I just wanted to make those comments.
Anyone else, anything else? Okay, the amendments are first up for consideration, so the two amendments, as I wrote them down, and this is super summary form, first one would be, um, medians only, so it would take any element of sidewalk enforcement out, and the fines would be amended from one-fifty to fifty. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
No.
Counselor Hall Harper?
Yes.
Counselor Archie?
No.
Counselor Dutton?
Yes.
Counselor Bellis?
Sorry.
Counselor Gilbert?
No.
Counselor Bingle?
No.
Counselor Decter Wright?
Yes.
Counselor Lakin?
No. So, the amendments do not pass, we're back on to the main motion, and, um, your motion was just for the ordinance, and then we'll do the emergency clause next. Okay. All right, so, um, we'll do the ordinance first, and then emergency clause after this. So, we have a motion and a second for the ordinance as it stands, please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
No.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
No.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bingle?
Yes.
Counselor Decter Wright?
No.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes. So, the ordinance passes?
Move for approval of the emergency clause on seven G.
Second. Please call the roll.
Counselor Bush?
Yes.
Counselor Hall Harper?
No.
Counselor Archie?
Yes.
Counselor Dutton?
Big no.
Counselor Gilbert?
Yes.
Counselor Bingle?
Yes.
Counselor Decter Wright?
No.
Counselor Lakin?
Yes. So, on, on that, does the emergency clause go into effect, or does it need six votes?
It required six votes.
Okay, all right, so it'll just be like thirty days later before this goes in, hopefully nobody gets hurt on medians or on our sidewalks between now and the thirty days. Okay, eight council items, a counselor's announcements and reports on current community events, activities, efforts, and concerns, other than announcements and reports, no discussion will ensue. Counselor Bingle? Yes, ma'am, sorry.
I have a question about, um, the next thirty days, just rest assured, if you are in an accident, there are still regulations, I just want to correct what I heard here. So, feel free to move about the sidewalks and stand on them for the next thirty days, and in thirty days, this will take effect. Hopefully, that'll give us time to really clarify for the public what just passed, because I think there's still a lot of confusion about what's already on the books, and what in thirty days is going to be on the books. So, perhaps in the next four weeks, I'll be able to announce some sort of community meeting that we can all get together and really get some clarity on how we keep each other safer, on the sidewalks, on the streets, and everywhere in between. Thank you.
Counselor Bingle.
Thank you. September fifteenth, uh, we'll be having a District Six Town Hall at Hannah Hall at eighteen oh one South Garnett Road, uh, from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM, we'll have code enforcement, uh, the Tulsa Fire Marshal's Office, Tulsa Police, the Mingo Valley Dig, excuse me, Division Commander, um, and then we'll also have Parks to present proposals for use of the IOT two funding for projects within the district. And then we'll also have the Opportunity Project to talk about some of the programs and the impacts that they've had for after-school programs and the youth in our community. So, if you're able to attend, great, if not, we'll have it, uh, live on social media or some platform, um, for people to view remotely, so thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Archie?
Oh.
Come on.
I do not have this week, you know, I have something every week.
I know.
But, uh, no, we have this week off, we can go to Bengal's event, so.
Have fun on Labor Day.
Yeah, happy Labor Day.
Absolutely.
There you go. Okay, nine, there is no new business, ten, there are no appeals, eleven, hearing of public comments. Uh, this concludes the televised portion of our meeting.